All right, folks, thank you for coming tonight. Welcome to the Carver Board of Selectmen February, uh, April, I'm sorry, February, April 1st, 2014 meeting. We had a little executive session before you folks came in, and I regret to announce that because of the financial status of the town, this will be the last selectmen's meeting for the rest of the year. I know you're all heartbroken about that.[26.41][26.41](Laughter). April 4th, come on.[31.11][31.11](Laughter). All right.
I thought it was just because you were getting off the board.
Yeah. Everybody, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, Intentionally Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I want to ask everybody to join me in a moment of silence for Lieutenant Walsh, firefighter Kennedy, who gave their lives for the city of Boston, and also for a patrol officer, Greg Maloney, from public, uh, died in a car accident today. He's a father with two children, as was Lieutenant Walsh, I think he had three children, so please join me in a moment of silence for these fallen heroes. May God have mercy on their souls, and if we can do anything to their families, I'm sure we'll try to do that.
I know the Firefighters Credit Union has a memorial fund set up for the two firefighters, so you can send donations to the Firefighters Credit Union in Boston.
And I'm sure the Plymouth Police Department and their unions will put something together for Officer Maloney and his family, and if you have an opportunity and would like to assist the families, please do so. Okay, couple of housekeeping issues. There are openings on several committees. Please contact the selectmen's office for a listing and applications. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the Public Library, and the Carver Elementary PTO is hosting their second annual Coyote Family Challenge on Saturday, April 12th. This is a great way to promote healthy and family fun. You can register the whole family for a 2.5 or five-mile race, and they're happy to say that 100% of the profit will go back to Carver Elementary School, and is used to provide opportunities like field trips, enrichment programs, and technology in the classroom. Get up and get out. Celebrate spring with the Coyotes of Carver. Walk or run, it will be great fun. Can't run, but would still like to help out a great cause, then please consider race sponsorship. And there's a link that you can go to, and this will be posted, so that folks can take this down if they, if they want to get in touch with these folks, okay? The Historic District Commission has Carveropoly Games for sale for $20, and the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is April 13th through 19th. We would like to recognize our excellent dispatches that work behind the scenes for all the public safety agencies. And I can speak from, you know, personal experience as to how important they are, especially when we're en route to calls and the information they provide us that helps us analyze the situations before we get there and make sure that we don't walk into any bigger mess than we're already dealing with, so I tip my hat to them. They do a great job. Tonight, we were going to do a presentation of the Boston Post Kane on a proclamation to Vera Ducat, who is 105 years old, the oldest citizen in Carver. God bless her. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it here tonight with us, so we're going to hold off on the proclamation until the next meeting, and we hope you'll all come back and help us celebrate Vera's milestone. That's unbelievable. I'll be a happy man if I live to be two-thirds of that, you know, never mind 105.
I was wondering where all the cupcakes went. Put it back in the freezer.
Next up is the vote to approve the Board of Selectmen Code of Conduct, and Mr. Milonowski, do you have?
I think I'm actually going to turn that over to the subcommittee that met last Thursday.
Okay.
To, to...
Would that be Mr. Ward?
...by the full board.
Yeah.
That would be, not just me, that would be Helen and Jack also.
Well, I'll read, if you don't mind, do you want me to just read the headings, or do you want me to read the ABCs underneath them? I'm not going to read all of them, I'm going to let Dick and Helen help me out, just so the general public will know exactly what it is.
Well, that's going to be posted also, right? We can put that on the website and everything, so.
So should I bother reading it, or?
I would give the meat of the...
Okay, so the first one's a member of the Board of Selectmen in relation to his or her community should. Here's just a couple of them. Realize that his or her basic function is to make policy with administration delegated to the town administrator. Be well-informed, concerned in the duties of a board member on both local and state levels. Remember that he or she represents the entire community at all times, and abide by the ethics guidelines established by the state, not the position of selectmen to obtain inside information on matters that may fit someone personally. Helen, you want to take the next group and just skip through some of them?
Yeah, I mean, just, we can just summarize it, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, it's basically how we act towards, the first bullet that Jack already mentioned was the community. The second is how we interact with the town administrator. The third is how we interact with each other, and then the fourth is how we interact with the employees of the town of Carver. And then there's bullets under each one of those.
And basically, we've seen all of this. We just made a few changes at our meeting the other night.
That's right.
I don't know if Dick wants to run through some of those. That was near the end.
The, no, yeah, you want to run through?
I don't want to catch you off guard.
Oh, I remember the, with the town staff and, and his, our relations with our town staffs?
Yeah.
Is that what you want to go through, the As and Bs and everything?
I'll just skip through, I think we just changed, yeah.
Treat all staff as professionals, clear, honest communication. It's pretty straightforward, common sense, limited contact with specific town staff, questions to town staff, and requests for additional background information should be directed only to the town assistant and town administrator and administrative assistant of the Board of Selectmen, or department heads. The office of the town administrator should be copied on all requests or correspondence. Never publicize criticism or individual, an individual employee or criticize them. Concerns about staff performance should only be made to the town administrator. Limited request to staff support, and ensure that all requests go through the town administrator's office. Ensure, ensure then any materials or information provided a selectman be made available to all selectmen in a timely manner, and that's pretty much that section.
Yeah, and that's pretty much the part that we changed.
That's right.
And I think we had a pretty spirited debate that night, didn't we?
Not a lot of changes.
Yeah.
There weren't a lot of changes.
Good. So, I mean, Helen, I think Helen and Dick and I are pretty much all in agreement with this, it's just Sarah and Mike, you know, if you had any comments on it.
It's our effort to follow what other towns' Board of Selectmen are doing in order to try to work together and work on this respect thing in our town civility, and so I support, I support that code of conduct.
And also, people should be aware, you know, we're voting this in now, but we would expect that the new Board of Selectmen would review it, and hopefully they'll keep the spirit of this and then vote whatever changes they want to make.
And we want to make sure that we are a democracy, and it's important to have differences of opinion.
Oh, absolutely.
That's our job.
It would be kind of boring if we all felt the same way, it would always be a five-to-nothing vote all the time, so.
Okay. Somebody get a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the Code of Conduct of the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Oh, second, okay, Dick can say it.
We have a motion and a second for other comments, questions, recommendations.
Yeah, I, I think for the most part, these are, these are, a lot of these are really good. It's things that we should, you know, be doing anyway, abide by ethics and, but I'm very troubled by the, the limits it puts on our freedom of speech, some of the points in here, and also there are some points that I actually can't even discuss my issue with because it has to do, well, because I'm also an employee, so that's a little hard for me. So I just wanted to make that really clear, that I think that when, if anyone does something that we feel is, is wrong, or unethical, or against what the people, you know, have said they wanted, we need to stand up and, and say that, and, you know, the implication in here is that we're not going to be able to do that. And to me, that's, that's just sort of, goes against the Constitution, so I have a problem with that.
Which bullets are you referring to, Sarah?
Well, let's see, 3G.
Refrain from speaking negatively about a fellow member of the Board of Selectmen, whether verbally or written.
That's correct. And, I mean, if, if something happens that is, you know, someone does something that is, is not right, or that's wrong, or that's misinformed, or someone puts bad information out there, we're not supposed to say something about that? I mean, that, that to me is just not right.
Well, again, it says refrain, it doesn't say you can't do it. It just is self-policing that as a policy.
Well, I, you know, I think you can still disagree with somebody without having to speak negatively about them.
Right.
And everybody's entitled to their opinion, so.
Well, who's def, who's defining negative here, too? You know, I mean, if someone does something and someone else thinks it's, you know, a bad thing, and then they say, "Well, you shouldn't have done that bad thing," is that a negative thing? Well, if it happens to be true, then, you know...
I would think if you personalize it and you call on that person a jerk because they had a, a different opinion or didn't agree with you, I think that that would be negative. Not the fact that you're disagreeing with their opinion.
I think we're all going to have different opinions of what's negative.
I don't think we were trying to eliminate anyone, I think we just were trying to promote the concept of agree to disagree with people, but not doing it in such a nasty, negative tone that it really brings down the reputation and professionalism of the Board of Selectmen. That's what we were trying to get at, we weren't trying to eliminate anyone's free speech, we all have that free speech, and to be a fully functional Board of Selectmen, I think we will have disagreements, but we have to keep them civil.
Oh, I couldn't agree with that more.
And also that, when we were discussing this, we were discussing it in the fact that what we're trying to instill is, in, in my strong opinion, we are the leaders of this community, and I wanted to create this Code of Conduct so we can set a precedent of respect for one another, and it does say exactly that, refrain from, it doesn't say that you can't speak negatively, but it's going to help us to take a step back before we decide to say something in writing or verbally, because we are, we are the leaders of this community, and I would hope that by us saying refrain from it, that maybe we would approach that fellow selectman behind closed doors and discuss what you or I may feel is a misinterpretation of facts or what have you, instead of us out in public speaking negatively upon one another.
You know, it's...
So it's not saying that you can't, it's just...
And I think you have to remember, and I think Dick brought this up, was we've all been elected by the people of this town, so it's, it's not by speaking negatively, you know, what are you saying to those voters that cast a vote for you? Are you casting doubt in their mind? We're trying to encourage people to come out and vote and be part of the process. It might discourage people.
Well, I think what you're doing is you're setting a standard here. Nothing can inhibit or impede your freedom of speech, not even this document here, but I think you're setting a standard, and, you know, and rightfully so. And hopefully, people will be able to abide by this and conduct themselves in a professional manner, and get the business of the town done, without trying to, you know, undermine people's status in the community, you know, casting negative aspersions about individuals, so.
Sarah, did you want to reword it in any way? Or you said you had another part of the Code of Conduct that you weren't happy with?
Uh, well, no, actually, what I said was there, there are parts of it that I can't really discuss, being a town employee.
Oh, okay.
Whether I'm happy or not.
Gotcha.
So, you, you guys can vote on it if you want to, I...
In, in the bulk of this, you know, probably 95, 98% of it was first adopted by a different town years ago, and I think a lot of other towns have something similar to this. And, you know, it's always made to be reworked. We're going to have a brand-new Board of Selectmen in just, in less than a month.
I, and I, I have to be honest, I've already started using this. I was at a convention last weekend, and there was discussion about town politics, and someone started to say something negative about one of my fellow selectmen, and I was almost very quick to agree, because in my heart, I agreed, but then I thought about what we have been working on to implement, and I, I held back and said, "I would prefer not to express my input on this one." And I was proud of myself, because I had, I had already said vocally that I have never said anything in writing about one of my fellow selectmen before, and I never will, but I actually remembered us talking about this Code of Conduct, and at this convention, I can unequivocally, again, say, I had to work at it because I wanted to jump in on that conversation, but I didn't. So, and I think that's what we mean by refrain from, because I thought about it and said, "What good is going to come out of me adding my two cents into this conversation?" And I think, again, as leaders of this community, we need to work as a team and not as adversaries.
You know, like, there's probably a lot of us have been brought up this week, but I was brought up, that if you can't say something good about someone, don't say anything at all.
So, anyway.
I suppose that doesn't apply to politicians.
Sure.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I was just going to say that it, it, it follows along the consensus idea when you're working on decision-making, and that's why I thought I can support that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed. 4-0-1. Okay. Next up is the vote to approve Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives. Who wants to take the lead on this? Jack?
This came out of a facilitation meeting, and I think it was presented at a prior Board of Selectmen's meeting, and we pretty much left it intact. I don't think we changed it at all, did we, Helen and Dick?
No, because we had decided that we had had the facilitation meeting a few weeks back with all of the selectmen, well, Mike, you were not able to be at that meeting, but we didn't feel that we should change what we had already discussed at the facilitation meeting, so we pretty much kept it the same, because all of the selectmen had agreed to what is laid out here.
And we didn't just come into the meeting and say, I think we probably spent 45 minutes of an hour having a spirited discussion going over it, and we finally came up with this here, so.
And I would suggest that these Code of Conduct and Policy Statement, Highlights of the Board of Selectmen Policy Statement be posted on the website if we can. That way, anybody that wants to look at them can see them, maybe put them on a bulletin board in town for those that don't have a, a computer.
And I think it was our general feeling that, once again, you know, we're going to have a new Board of Selectmen, that maybe they should have a facilitator come in in June or July, or something like that, and go through this and see what they want to adopt.
Well, this can be a guide for them until they get their feet on the ground, you know, so.
And that was a recommendation from the facilitator, that every new Board of Selectmen, their first order of business after appointing a chair and so forth, should be to go back and either vote to reconfirm prior policies or modify. And, again, that should be a tangible practice at that first transition meeting.
Well, hopefully, that the committees that have been recently established, the Financial Committee, the Governance Committee, and so forth, will be in a position to make ongoing recommendations and lighten the load for the, for the Board of Selectmen, you know. As most people realize, part-time employees, most of us have full-time jobs and families, so I think that that's just going to be very, very beneficial to the entire process, and I commend you for coming up with those ideas, so.
And it does say right on the highlights, "Need to revoke all policies every election, and Board of Selectmen needs to self-police itself."
Okay. We have a motion on this.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Highlights of the Board of Selectmen Facilitation Meeting Policy Statement for 2014.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Um, yeah, I, Helen, you said we all agreed. I, I actually didn't agree. See, I need to abstain on this one, because I don't have all the numbers yet for whether or not, you know, reorganization in and of itself probably isn't such a good idea, but if it's going to save us money and provide the same or better services, then I'd be in favor of that. But I'm going to, I'm going to hold back on that till we have, I know you're still working on, on those, Michael, so until we, you know, know what those numbers are, what, which reorganizations are going to actually save us money, or improve, or at least keep the services the same.
I apologize, I thought we were all in agreement when we put the five goals over the next year with Sarah's...
More or less agreement.
Yeah, I thought we, that's why we, he put them down.
I don't think any reorganization would be proposed if it doesn't, A, improve efficiency and provide more services with the same or less revenue, or re, or reduce revenue expenses. So I think that goes without saying that any type of reorganization, if it doesn't pass one or both of those tests, there's no point in reorganizing.
Yeah, but, well, I understand, but it, it actually, I think it needs saying, because, you know, we, we can't assume that it goes without saying.
But it's also consistent with the financial management policies you've already approved.
Yes.
So, do you want to go back and change those?
I'd like to, yeah.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because at the time, you know, that was, I, I felt that was sort of thrown at me. I mean, it's been approved, and that's fine, but, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, so...
Well, we have to build a budget based upon policies that are approved for the Board, and if we're going to go back and undo the policies after it's been approved, I need some direction on that, because that's how we're building the budget.
Right. Well, I think the Board has given you that direction, Michael, I'm not, you know, trying to give you trouble here, I feel that it's hard to know what we should have in place when we, when, I don't, I haven't seen any numbers, I haven't heard any, any financials from anybody, really, so.
I think the issue with that is that we're still trying to get a handle on the revenue and...
No, and I understand, but...
Any expenses, so.
You have a chicken and egg issue here, I think, generally, is that, or the cart before the horse, is that you have to start with a policy, and then when the, the, the horse, or the cart comes, you get to vote on the cart, too. But you got to start with the policy, allow the budget process to go forward, and at the end of the day, if you don't like the results of the, of the outcome of the policies you've adopted, then that's where you change the outcome. But you can't have the outcome without having the policy first, otherwise, we just spin our wheels.
And, and that's why we have the policy, I guess.
Yeah, that's correct, and that's why I need to know if you want to change the policy, because I need to know what direction we're heading.
Well, it doesn't depend entirely on me.
Well, I like to get consensus with the whole board, I don't know, I think...
Well, I think it's a, it's a, it's a moving target, really. I mean, we're in the stages, the infant stages right now of trying to put everything in town under a microscope, so we're going to be learning as we go, you know, we have a new town administrator, we're going to have new board members, so I think it's going to be a moving target, and it'll be constantly tweaked and readjusted where need be, but we've got some difficult challenges ahead of us, let there be no doubt about that. So, I think that starting off with some parameters and guidelines is a good idea. If you need to modify them as you go along, you'll have the capability and the ability to do that, so, just my opinion on that. Any other comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the goals and objectives, please say aye.
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 Aye, opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain. Two of us will, we'll abstain. Mr. Milonowski, all yours.
Sure, if I could have our police chief come up and talk a little bit about the Citizens' Police Academy that he's going to be running, and for us also to thank an anonymous donator for funds to start this up and to accept those donations. I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, board. I'll speak loudly in this microphone, and I'll make this brief. Again, Mr. Milonowski said that we're, we've received a donation of $5,000 to start what's called a Citizens' Police Academy. It's an idea that's flourished in many other departments, and it's a way of building a partnership between the department and the community. So I just prepared a few words, if you don't mind, I'll just read them to you. One of the greatest assets that a police department can have in its mission is its partnership with the community. That partnership opened up lines of communications between the offices and the community members that they serve. Communications is always a good thing, and it provides information that may not have been known, but it also allows both sides to better understand what can be done, what is being done, and what should be done. It is my goal to improve that partnership at every opportunity. With that said, we've been very fortunate to get this $5,000 donation from an anonymous citizen, thankfully, to just start holding a Citizens' Police Academy. The Police Academy would be a program designed to give Carver residents an opportunity to learn more about their police department and the services that we provide. This program is not intended to train participants to perform law enforcement duties, but rather to create a better informed citizenry and develop a working relationship with the community to solve problems within the town. The program is designed to familiarize residents with the daily operations of the Carver Police Department. Classes would be held over the library once a week, and be taught by Carver police officers. Topics may include domestic violence, use of force, patrol procedures, Constitution and motor vehicle law, narcotics enforcement, drunk driving, canine patrol, courtroom procedure, and maybe even criminal investigation. As part of it, participants would also be allowed to participate in a ride-along with an officer. By allowing citizens a firsthand look at what rules, regulations, and policies the police follow, they will gain a better understanding of what officers actually do in their day-to-day work. I firmly believe this idea, coming at no cost to the town, will greatly improve our citizens' knowledge and understanding of their police department. It will enhance the relationship between the offices and residents, and it will strengthen the partnership between both and give you a better police department. The details of it are still being fleshed out as far as what nights we're going to hold them and how we're going to do the application process, we'll only be able to do a group of 20 or so at a time, and as, as we get that firmed up, we'll be posting that on our website and bring it to the Board of Selectmen so that we can get it out to the people and see who would be interested. And I just want to say again, thank you to the anonymous donor, wish we could give his name, but we really appreciate that help, because it allows this, this program to flourish even in a time of tough economic times when we couldn't afford to do it, you know, through the budget, but we certainly can through this donation.
Thank you, chief, hopefully, and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I would like to offer our deep gratitude to this anonymous donor also. I think it's an excellent, excellent show of support and a step in the right direction as we try to harness this horrific problem that we're dealing with, especially, you know, the drugs in the community and everything at this point in time, so.
Yes, thank you very much, I agree.
Any questions by the Board or comments?
How many people do you think you made available till?
Initially, we're probably open up to about 20 to 25, depending on who applies. We'll be using their lodge room over at the library, so that's the space we could have confined it to, and that's about the, the class size that most departments use. It's a good controllable size, and then we're hoping to be able to, we've got some other grant opportunities that we're pursuing to hopefully be able to offer it a few times a year, so that we can get as many people who are interested in doing it. Most police departments that start doing it find it to be an excellent program, and it continues on, and you'll, they'll start to establish plaques for their graduating classes of each time, you know, at the end, you'll, you'll maybe have a cake and a graduation with some T-shirts, so people get to become part of, you know, get to feel part of the department, and that camaraderie builds each time it grows.
And how long does it take?
Well, we're, we're looking at either between nine and 12 weeks, depending on the subjects we want to teach, and how much, how well we can use the money that we have to, to establish that.
Tara?
Comment? I just wanted to commend you, chief, because I, it's, you've obviously got it timed for a reason, because here we are, going through this community thing through the school, you and your department are doing outreach, we have, it looks like we have excellent cooperation from all the officers with our community, and I just think that it is a necessary help towards many things, but especially this drug thing, this heroin problem, and so I commend your whole department. And so, uh, I commend your whole department, I think it's great.
Thank you, I think there's a, a good effort within the department and within the community to move forward on this issue, and I think working together, we, we will do that. When I'm, I'm gonna leave here, uh, in a minute to head over to a Drug Education Forum over in Plymouth to view that, um, because we're gonna, we're, I'll be talking with them Thursday of this week. We're trying to put together a similar forum in KAVA for parents and, and kids, and anybody that wants to come to it, to speak about the problem, education on a, a lot of different topics to do with the drug problem. It's being put on in Plymouth right now by Representative Coulter, and we're gonna, we're gonna try to sponsor the same type situation over here in, in KAVA. Actually, we're, we're the first police department to do it, it's always been sponsored by other people, so we'll, we'll be moving forward on that, um, and as soon as we have more details on that, we'll get it out.
Doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Will there be a self-defense facet to this, Chief?
We're gonna keep the tases at the station. Unless an officer wants to get tased, but other than that, we're.
We have, we have a few that might volunteer, eh?
We do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
So, Mr. Chairman, we need to ex, uh, create a gift account, we need to create a gift account and to accept the five thousand dollars.
Do we accept? Yes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to create a count, uh, to accept this gift. And any further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Meg, are you here to oversee us, make sure we do this right? Good girl, good girl. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please.
I think this member is a prominent member of our community, and I think it's fantastic that we're getting this size donation.
We're all prominent members of our community, Jack. All those in favor, please say aye.
To talk to.
Aye, aye. Are you with us, aye?
Um, aye.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could take out a order, the community-wide accounting software, and ask our town accountant to come up and speak on this as well. In your packet, it's, uh, you receive some information on, uh, including a memo from the town accountant, as well as backup documentation, uh, for, uh, proposed financial software for the town. One of the things that I want to just frame the issue is that when I came into town is, uh, in my first staff meeting, there was, uh, issues that were raised about technology and also about our accounting software program. The technology we're working on, I have a consultant that's putting together a plan for it for the town side. However, for our accounting software, what I asked the town accountant to do was to put together a team of the heavy users, uh, for the software, determine what the pros and cons of the software are that we're using today, and then to provide, uh, next steps and where do we go to improve those. With that, that included the town accountant, the treasurer-collector, um, the town assessor, and included the school department, with both the superintendent and the business manager being the four major users of the, of the software package. They came back with their recommendations, and the Funware, um, that we currently use, which is known as not-so-fun, was unanimously determined that we should move forward in a different direction unless certain things can be resolved. With that, um, the town accountant and I met with, um, the vice president of the Funware package, and, uh, they stated that they were going to be able to make some changes to our software. The town accountant then had a follow-up meeting with his assistant, and she'll explain, um, they weren't able to deliver on the items that we had looked at. With that, and, and having a, a firm whose market share was diminishing, and the concern is to whether or not we'd be able to have proper support next year to run our financial system, which is a core component of the community, no matter what, we have to be able to receive money and pay bills, is that I then authorized her to go and get some price quotes off of the state bid list on what's available. And those range from a, and a, a full-blown expense of two hundred and, uh, Meg, was it?
Two sixty-five.
Two sixty-five, uh, down to a number of about one forty, I believe it was, including, um, including implementation, uh, with a, a phased-in scheduling plan. So with that, um, we've also met with, um, the Finance Committee last night, talked to them about this issue. Uh, they're gonna be taking this up again, uh, next Monday, and we are in the process of finalizing a plan with the school and the school business manager for potential implementation of the software, which should be resolved by the end of this week. So with that, as framing the issue out, I'm gonna turn it over to Meg and have her tell you about the issues we have in more detail, and what this new package is going to provide the town.
Uh, well, I, I guess to start, the issues that we're having would be usability, um, and integration of the financial offices, because a lot of the packages that are out there now are much more integrated. So if the assessor does a commitment, I would be able to import it rather than having to make journal entries, so it eliminates a lot of the duplication of effort. We've also had some issues in terms of integrity of the Funware system. Schools had a major issue, um, with the purchase order last year. I've noticed several issues where, I'll print a report, uh, just last week, Lynn had printed a report for me when I was checking the warrant, and, um, we had discussed that one of the expenses had to be classified to a different account, and, but when I was looking at it, it said it wasn't reclassed, so then I reclassed it, and then it turned out that the system had done, and I spoke to Funware about that, and they said, well, you know, they, they didn't really have an, an, an answer as to why that had happened, but we've also imported receipts from the treasurer's office and accounts will change from what we're looking at and what it imports to our system. And it's just, to me, because I do have a background as an auditor, that if something like that happens, and these are the ones that we're picking up on, I have no faith in the numbers that are being generated, I shouldn't say no faith, it's just that it causes me to have concerns about the issue, the numbers that are being posted. So I would say that's, you know, to, between the integration, duplication of effort, errors that have occurred, um, a, and it, honestly, in speaking to everyone that was on the, this committee to look for a new package, none of them were happy, not, well, the, the treasurer, like, the, the cash receipts Zobrio system, and I think it's a pretty good system too, it's very costly. But other than that, no one really was very pleased with the product, so.
And Zobrio's not part of this Funware package?
No, no, Zobrio is actually, it's a hefty cost every year as well, um.
Would that be eliminated if we went to one of these other integrated?
Yes.
So we combine that economies of scale efficiencies and eliminate some of these?
Right, right, exactly.
Is Zobrio the one that we installed a few years back?
Yes.
Yes, recently, yes.
They gave us a, a nice attractive price, but then after a couple of years, they like quadrupled the price.
It was, it was, it was, it was seven thousand for the first couple of years, and then this last year went up to fifteen thousand, so.
Now, let me ask you something, the, the SoftRight, don't they have a similar system, other than it doesn't do the, it doesn't do the bank records, right?
I believe it does, and Paula would know better, she sat down with SoftRight, but, uh, their new product that's cloud-based does do the rec.
Oh, it does, okay. So it's very similar, how much does that cost?
Five thousand, as opposed to, to Funware's, or Zobrio's fifteen thousand.
To an automatic ten thousand savings right off the bat.
Right, right. And, and I mean, if you look at, I mean, obviously, the cost of this upfront, it looks large, and it is large, but what they're, they're willing to do is to have an option of pricing where we spread out the cost over five years, so that rather than coming up with a full cost, we come up with a much smaller cost. For five years, we stay static on the IT budget, and then after that fifth year, it comes down, and we actually pay less for superior, superior product, in my opinion. But the, when we did meet with Funware, we were told that the, the reports could be done differently, um, and that they were gonna have, um, one of their people come out and show me. So prior to her coming out, she had asked me, well, what reports do you want to see? My issue is, is I don't want to create reports for you, show me the reports that you've got, and I'll tell you which ones work and which ones need to be altered. So she decided she would bring them out, and when she came out, she didn't have any reports with her. So then we started going through the reports, and I said, well, I, you know, I don't like this, I really need to see this information, and she kept telling, we can't do that, we can't do that, we can't do that. And basically, I was flat-out told that Funware will not be able to make the changes that we wanted to see, but their new product would, their, their upgraded product would. So I wanted to see this product in another town, talk to other people, see how they liked it, ask to where it was implemented, and she said, well, nowhere in Massachusetts, there's a town in Alaska, and a few, and a few counties in the Midwest. So in order for us to have a product that we can use.
I told her that wasn't in our travel budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I tried, I tried, Alaska sounded good.
Uh, just, just the concerns about their viability alone is enough to raise red flags, you know what I mean, so I think you guys are doing the right thing, heading in the right direction.
I think the advantages you've used SoftRight before, haven't you?
I have used, I mean, for, for, I mean, that shouldn't be the only reason, because, I mean, if you're gonna have a large investment.
Well, it's just another advantage, I think.
You should be going to, yeah, you should be, you know, going to something that is the best product at the best cost for the town. And there really are no, there's two major vendors of software in Massachusetts right now, it's either Munis, which is a two sixty-five, or SoftRight. Everyone else is, they're losing clients to those two vendors. And it, it is an advantage, because if I'm going to do a conversion and I'm going to help people, if I'm comfortable with it, it's gonna make it go a lot smoother.
And you, the software they're using now, it used to be Dad and Ashle Corporation, and it fell on hard times many years ago, and I think our prior town accountant, you know, he went out and looked at different types of software. And I think he liked this, uh, SoftRight, but it, he was convinced, uh, they were merged with WTI, and he was convinced, uh, I don't know if he had his arm twisted behind his back or not, but he was convinced to go with this WTI. It gave him the general ledger and the accounts payable, but it didn't do the treasurer, tax collector's office at all, so this is a good move in my mind. A real good move, and just how are we gonna pay for it, though?
And just, and one other thing too, that I think is, is tremendous with all of this, is that departments will have real-time access to their financial figures, which they don't have right now. They have to rely on me sending out a month-end report, and, you know, reports don't always go out the first week after the month, it could be second or third week. And so they're making financial decisions based on information that's three weeks old. Now, it's, you, you would be able to go in, see what your balance is, and, you know, I, I just think that that's a huge bonus too.
Didn't the prior town accountant download it into Excel and create the financial statements that way, which created a lot more work for him and his assistant?
It, it is, and it's, it's an accuracy issue too, because what we have are called F-nine reports, so like I was saying about the CAN reports, that I want a system that has CAN reports. Right now, what I have is an Excel s, uh, set, Excel spreadsheet setup, and they're called F-nine, because you hit an F-nine key, and it pulls information from the accounting software. Unfortunately, if you add a new account, you've got to remember to add it to the system, and you've got to remember to add it to the spreadsheet. It doesn't, that spreadsheet doesn't automatically change the months, and there's a lot of work that goes into it, especially at the crossover from year end. That it should be just something that you spit out from the system, that's the way to do it.
Automatic, yeah.
You, because then, then you know that the numbers are correct, anything offline just creates room for error.
What is it you're looking for from, uh, the board tonight?
Uh, right now, it's purely an informational meeting, um, this is, um, we're working with the Finance Committee to fund this, and if I can call your attention to this page, uh, which is page two of the software proposal.
This one here, Mike?
Uh, next page, yep. Is that what they did is they priced this out into two options, one, if we buy the software and the implementation is one lump-sum fee, and that'd be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Or, as Meg said, they spread that out over five years, and then we pay a smaller number upfront, which is about a forty thousand dollar upfront payment, and it would be spread over six months.
That's option two.
That's option two, so, so what we're looking at is to head into option two. If you look at the forty-two thousand dollars that you see each year, that's in essence what we're spending today on IT services. So they've embedded into here twenty thousand dollars per year of the licensing fee, and, and year six, that goes away, and we're back down to, to just for the annual support fee.
So there's really no significant increase in costs since we're already spending that?
There's the initial forty thousand dollars, and, uh, as an upfront cost, uh, but then after that, um, you know, in, in, if I look at that in seven years, you've broke even with a superior product.
Sure.
We are also exploring the opportunity of hosting this thing, uh, in the clouds for the forty-five hundred dollars. Uh, we're gonna come back with a different alternative that's gonna be significantly cheaper to save that money. But again, the net out of this is in, in six years, you're saving money after you pay your upfront cost, you get a superior product. SoftRight has committed to, if we move forward, um, um, at the next finance meeting, which is next Monday, that they'll be able to make this implementation occur by the end of the fiscal year. So July one, we'll be entering new information in SoftRight, and that's, um, and again, the implementation schedule's gonna be finalized, um, also with the schools on Friday. I do want to point out, one other thing is that we had, as part of this package, had them, uh, had them create or, or donate, if you will, another ten thousand dollars worth of software modules in here, which has a residual value of about twenty-five hundred dollars per year. If you go back to the previous page, what you're gonna see is, is a fixed asset module that we went back and they've agreed to donate into the package.
At the front page?
Uh, that's the first page of the SoftRight piece.
Yes, and I think that that fixed asset module alone was five thousand dollars, which we're getting for free.
Then after that, um, Jack, you're back two pages, I think?
The front page, right?
Front page, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, after the fixed assets, then the clerk, with all of the clerk, uh, fees, will be able to be put in here and be able to put in, in. And then once this data is inputted into the department, it automatically is electronically connected to the treasurer-collectors and the accountant software. So alls they have to do is just count the cash when it comes in, but all the stuff is entered into the equipment, into the system, so that in the treasurer-collectors office, they don't have to re-enter it, they just have to double-check it. That saves time.
Oh, yeah.
And, and window time. They also included at the bottom of the page, it's miscellaneous receipts, it's kind of a, uh, that's a catch-all. That includes about fifteen, it says, there's a call-out in this in the pa, in the document, um, about fifteen departments, uh, from the, uh, building permit, um, connection to fire permits to, um, what do we got here? Public works, plumbing inspections, licenses, uh, electric, uh, electrical inspections, Board of Appeals, police and fire fees, Board of Health, Building Department, library fees, Selectmen's fees, et cetera. Each department will now have a remote access into with this miscellaneous, which again, they're donating into, into the package, so, you know, I'm, I'm very comfortable with the price of this. Clearly, we do need to get the, um, the Finance Committee to, uh, allow us to go forward with this, with a reserve fund transfer. And as you look at the residual costs in a few, few years, that can all be done within our existing budget. We may look to propose financing that a different way, but bottom line is, in those out years, we can afford that within our existing structure. And again, as Meg said, you can have a superior product, um, with this implementation.
Well, Michael, right now, the support fees are what, thirty thousand a year?
Forty-two, forty-three, whatever, whatever.
The support fees that we're paying right now are forty-two thousand?
Yep.
For the, for the support from WTI?
For everything that we paid to WTI, it's.
Forty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
Well, I thought you said it was twenty-nine thousand, and it was the other, the other stuff was, uh, the difference.
Our cost with SoftRight would go, in year six goes from forty-two, so the bud, we, right now, we're budgeting forty-two thousand for Funware. And so if we go to, to SoftRight, we have to come up with an upfront cost of forty thousand, and every year, our IT budget would stay at forty-two thousand, and year six, it goes from.
It'll be the same.
It goes from forty-two thousand to twenty-six thousand, so.
Excellent.
That's five years away, though.
Is this a widely-used system?
It is.
It, 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 Munis and SoftRight are the two most, SoftRight is picking up tons of communities, they've picked up, what did Kevin say, like four, five, five major towns?
In the last two years, they've taken ten, ten communities away from WTI, and they have about a hundred communities in Massachusetts. The Munis program is the Cadillac, and it's obviously much more expensive. Larger communities generally need that, communities our size, um, predominantly are using the SoftRight.
Now, SoftRight is, are they primarily in just Massachusetts?
Yes.
Whereas Munis is a national company, this old.
It started off in Mass, and it's expanded, yes.
Well, it started off in Maine, really, and then combined, used to be a different kind, and then I used it when I was in Rockland.
Okay, maybe.
But the other, the other good thing about the, the system is, is each department would put in the check number and who they received it from, so they'd have a permanent record in the department, but if a check bounced, the treasurer would know exactly where it came from and could put them onto collecting that, instead of it, the burden being on the treasurer's office.
My question is, is, because I know as far back as when I was on the Finance Committee, we were talking about the integration of departments, and I thought Zobrio was accomplishing some of that back when you were.
They did.
And it is, it is, but only in the cash receipts, Zobrio, Zobrio only addresses cash receipts.
Just on the cash receipts. So it was only one little component?
Right.
Okay, so this is gonna solve all the integrations, so the treasurer's office is gonna be able to interact with the assessor's office, the assessor's office is now gonna be able to interact with the accountant office, et cetera. It's gonna be like, that's the way it should have been done, probably four years ago.
Including your budget, so the departments will have their budget online and what they're, they're spending off of that.
And that is, and that is a good, big part of this, too, is they have a budget module, which I don't know whether WTI has, but if we did, we'd probably have to, you know, pay for that as well. But I've used that budget module, and it, um, it's, it works really, really well. I mean, cause then departments enter their budgets to the system, and then it would allow, like, everyone to have access to it, which we don't have right now, cause we, what we have right now is, the budget is an Excel document. It goes back to what I said before, is anytime you have something not drawn, drawn from the system, too much room for error.
Incredible.
I think you guys are headed in the right direction. Deck, do you have anything you want to?
No, I'm...
Ask her, add her.
I'm absorbing.
Yeah.
They're learning, a bunch.
Anytime you have to export or import, the room for error is...
You know, I wanted to bring this to the selectmen and just get your endorsement and heading in this direction. We have done an inclusive process with all the parties. Uh, Meg and I had a two-and-a-half hour meeting on Monday with the superintendent and the business manager. The only issue is whether or not they're able to implement July first, or that needs to be pushed off three months. But the product is not the issue. We met with the finance committee. They're having another follow-up meeting. They seem to be supportive of this, as long as we answer a few questions. And, um, Meg is gonna be overseeing the implementation of this. I've done this before, um, with this software package and the implementation of that. Um, but again, it's, it's gonna be a change, and that's why I wanted to put it on the agenda tonight, and just get a thumbs up of us heading in the right direction.
Would you like a vote of support from the board, or?
Great.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, endorse...
Their endeavors to pursue.
Their endeavors. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further comments, questions, concerns, recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 opposed?
Thank you.
Janamus. Thanks, Meg. Keep up the good work with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Gonna make life easier in the long run, I think.
Absolutely. I just saw Alan out there. Do you have any comments on this?
Alan, would you like to add anything, or? No?
Sure. Just quickly. Uh, prior to coming to work for the Town of Carver, I worked for the Town of Born, and they had the Soft Right software. And it was amazing. And, um, I had gone to an MMA conference, uh, their annual thing. And, um, I had talked to the Soft Right people at that time, and I had brought some, uh, information back, and this is back in two thousand four or five, um, to share. And, um, unfortunately, it just didn't get off the ground, but it is an awesome program.
Probably should've done it five years ago.
Can I ask that a little, a question? No, cause when I was treasurer collector, we always had to pay an extra sixteen hundred bucks every...
Sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand.
No, remember, you had an outside agency do some conversion for you, so it would run in the software, so we could do the tax bills.
No, 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 we, we pay, we pay, um, WTI to do that.
Yeah.
Well, you do. Well...
Yeah.
The collectors.
Nobody does.
What I'm saying is, is, now with this new software, will you have to do that anymore?
No, so I think we'll be saving...
So you're saving thirty-two hundred dollars a year, right there?
Yeah. It, yeah, it's in, um, it's in Paula's budget, that she has to pay WTI seventeen thousand every year.
Take that right out.
All right, folks.
Oh, okay.
Let's direct the comments up to the board, please.
Sorry.
Come on, tell us.
That's it.
Thumbs up? You support it? Hardly?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
Excellent. I see the town clerk out there, too. I don't wanna leave anybody out of this discussion. Lynn, you have anything you wanna add to this?
Do you, do you like the clerk's side of it? Have you seen it?
I have, seen it, yes.
Oh.
So you're reserving judgment?
I am.
We appreciate that.
I appreciate it.
Good, okay.
Saves some more money.
That's it. All right.
All right.
So, Mike, you have your endorsement there onward, upward?
Thank you. We'll keep on charging along.
That's it.
Uh, next to the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the Borrego agreement, uh, with the Purchase Street Neighborhood, um, group. Um, as I have announced, uh, at our last meeting, uh, we do have an, uh, we had a tentative agreement at that point. Now we do have an agreement between the neighbors and the developer. Uh, that agreement, uh, that the neighbors struck included additional screening and buffers, uh, for the neighborhood to reduce their visual impact of the additional solar cells. Uh, with that, Borrego is going to the planning board tonight to increase their density within the same footprint, um, uh, to the megawatt that they had originally proposed, again, in a smaller footprint with more screening. And Borrego, as a good corporate citizen, has agreed to share half of their new profits, if you will, uh, for that expansion with putting into a technology fund. Uh, so that all occurred. Uh, the revised plan was signed off by the neighbors, uh, yesterday. Um, and again, that's in front of the planning board tonight to get endorsed. Um, Jack Hunter and I have been meeting with Borrego to go over the financial component of this, and they've also been providing, uh, the assessor some information so that she can do some calculations. Our town council has recommended that we do go forward and do a pilot, uh, for this project. Um, there's a lot of uncertainty, uh, with the lobbying group, um, representing solar cells, is if they're gonna be changing the taxable structure of these in the future. So if we have a contractual agreement through a pilot, it, it basically hedges the community's, um, uh, risk, because it's a contractual agreement for a certain period of time. And in that contractual agreement, we will look at, uh, building in some of the profit components into here that they are looking to donate to the town. So, um, it, you know, I know the neighborhood, um, was not happy about the project. It went on for two and a half years and some significant litigation. Um, we were able to, uh, get everybody on board, um, with supporting a concept that everyone, if you will, got a little bit from. No one's happy, but everyone's satisfied. They got the best deal they could. And at the end of the day, that's a good negotiation.
Excellent. Do you think it's pretty much a done deal now, or do you think there's still some moving parts?
Uh, there technically should not be some moving parts. Um, the planning board's gonna be reviewing that this evening if they vote that out. It goes into them just, uh, modifying the building permit, and, uh, for us to finalize, um, the cost-share agreement, and then for town meeting to vote to approve a pilot.
And has the appeal period expired with the planning board?
Uh, the appeal period did expire for the original project. That's why the neighbors let it go forward.
Okay.
Well, the important issue is that the, uh, the neighbors, the members of that, uh, neighborhood over there are, are happy with what the end result is, and can...
I don't wanna say, I don't wanna leave it that they're happy and great, this is coming.
Yeah.
They, they, they're happy they got the best deal they could.
Okay.
They knew something was coming because the owner of the property had certain land rights and could develop something. And now it's gonna be developed, and they're not gonna see it as much.
Excellent.
So overall, it's the best that anyone could hope for, including Borrego.
Yeah, and I had a lot of help, um, uh, from staff on that. Jack Hunter helped. Um, a conservation agent helped, uh, through the process with Sarah, putting together some screening components. And, um, um, overall, um, you know, there was a good team effort.
Excellent. Good.
Well, I appreciate everything that you've done, Michael. I think it's a fabulous job that you've been able to bring all these parties together and get this thing done.
Jumped right in.
Puts one more thing behind us, and makes me feel better about the, the neighborhood up there.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Um, the, uh, let's see, uh, implementation of new financial internal controls. Um, last week, um, I sent out a memo, an effective immediately memo, um, because the town accountant and, and I identified some irregularities into internal controls for the town. And in those internal controls, um, it included the following three items. One is that any deposits that are submitted to the, to the treasury, um, need to be signed off by the department head. So that we usually have staff taking in some of the deposits. The department head will do the checks and balance and verify those funds before they're submitted to the treasury collector, and they'll do their own review. Second is any, um, employees or contractors, um, need to have the department head also sign off on their invoices or payment for services. And that's the second thing that went into effect immediately. The third is that under state law, a community cannot accept, uh, cannot pay for products or services ahead of time. We either have to have the product, like a generator in hand, and then we can pay for it, um, or we need to have the service complete, and then we can pay for, full cost for that service. Or hypothetically, if a service is gonna take two weeks for a consultant to do, you could pay them fifty percent after half of the work's been done, uh, but not the other fifty percent until the other work has been done. So, again, uh, the treasury collectors and the accountant and, uh, department heads will not be submitting any more vouchers for work that hasn't been completed or partially completed, and you built for that partial component. So those, those went into effect last week, again, to identify, uh, to correct, um, some internal issues that we, that we, that were brought up.
Awesome.
Um, next item is that, um, the fire station building committee and the school building committee, um, have all been appointed. Uh, letters have gone out to all the individuals. The school building committee is gonna have its first meeting. I believe it is April twenty-first, which is a Monday, over at the elementary school. And the fire building committee is going to most likely be having a meeting in the next two weeks, chief, something like that? Within the next two weeks, um, to move those projects forward.
Can you tell us who the members are?
Um, I can. Um, let's see.
All of these members have to be sworn in, right, Lynn?
All the members have to be sworn in.
So that was part of their letter notifying them that they need to, okay?
Yes, it was.
So we don't run into that issue again.
On, um, the fire station building committee, it is the fire chief, the town administrator, the president of the fire association, Bob Middle, Middleorf?
Mittendorf.
Mittendorf. Um, I can never pronounce Dave's name.
Seidenthoff.
Seidenthoff. Uh, Bill Harriman, John Deli Pescoli, and then George Callahan?
Callahan.
Callahan. Uh, that's on the fire, uh, committee, uh, fire building committee. And on the, uh, school building committee is, um, um, Dick Ward, uh, the town administrator, uh, Barry Struski, uh, from the school committee, uh, the superintendent, Dave Seidentharp. Toff. I wish I can't do it. Um, uh, Dan Ryan, uh, the principal of the elementary school, Ruby, uh...
My Estes.
My Estes.
My Estes. There we go. I'm not even gonna try Heather's name.
Supolvera.
There we go. Uh, John Cotter, um, John Deli Pescoli, and Sarah Sterns. Uh, those are the eleven voting members, um, as per how the committee was set up. Uh, we also have two, uh, non-voting members, which would be another person from the school committee, and also the school business manager. And, uh, I'm pretty confident with those eleven voting members. It has a good, uh, distribution of the town, um, that can advocate for the project, um, and develop a consensus project that we can move forward and, uh, get the, uh, the proper support, uh, from the town to authorize the project. So those are going forward. The planning board voted the, um, uh, the Borrego project with a thumbs up, so one more step down. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can we make sure, Elaine, that we get the, uh, membership of these committees posted online?
Okay, um... My next item, Mr. Chairman, has to do with some budgetary issues. And, uh, it has to do with free cash, new revenue for FY fifteen, and also the FY fifteen budget framework. Now, um, it pains me to do this because I like to have budgets out as soon as possible so that they can be fully vetted and discussed, and people can review them. However, there's still several inputs, um, that need to be taken into consideration. One of them's later on the agenda tonight for potentially raising or some modifying some permits and user fees. Um, the second is that I'm working with a couple of the unions, um, and also the governance committee on looking on some reorganization components. And what I don't wanna do is, I have acknowledged that our revenues do not cover our expenses. We all know that. I've demonstrated that we're gonna have to potentially be doing some layoffs, some reduction of hours, some reorganizations, or creation of new revenue. What I don't wanna do is that I don't want to put a number out on the number of employees that may be affected uh, until I have scrubbed the budget to the final penny, because I know that when I release a budget, it's gonna impact some, hopefully a few, or to the least possible number of people's lives. So to move forward too quickly in this process without having all those proper inputs, I don't wanna create any more anguish in anyone's life, thinking that they're gonna be on, um, on, on the list in order to meet the priorities of the town. Now, clearly, the direction that you've given me is, um, with the financial management policies you've approved, with the vote to include the war on heroin, and for us to go forward and tackle that, and without having significant new revenue, is that, um, that, um, there's not, you know, it's gonna require the cuts to make all these things happen. So with that being said, I am not gonna be releasing the full budget tonight because I need these other inputs, and I'm very respectful and have a lot of empathy for what some staff will be going forward. And I don't wanna announce that, oh, we may have to cut your position, and then all of a sudden have people go through a month of anguish and say, oh, well, we really didn't, cause we, um, changed something in the budget. You're good. That's not fair to anybody.
In fact, that's already occurred, hasn't it? So...
Uh, I, I'm making sure on my end that that's not occurring.
Right, right. So we wanna be extremely sensitive to that.
With that, I wanna pass around, um, what the numbers were this weekend. Um, I emphasize, I said this weekend, when I was putting this together. And, um, I'm, I'm passing those just for the purpose of showing that they're constantly changing. Uh, so to speak to free cash at this point, um, in this first category, and for those that aren't familiar with the word free cash, no, there's not a money tree, and we're picking money up, and somebody's just giving us money, and it's free cash.
And it's not free.
Not cash, and it's not free, that's right.
My, my kids believe it is.
Uh, well, that, that is true.
Why should the citizens think any different?
In essence, if you're looking at this from the private sector, this would be the profit that an organization makes from one year to the next, what the excess revenue was once all the expenses were calculated. It's a very simplistic way of putting this together. Now, we have, um, remaining six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in that. Uh, I had put down, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for snow and ice. Uh, Meg, who is not here now, gave me the good news yesterday that that has increased to two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Oh, gosh.
So for snow and ice, you know, we're looking at three hundred thousand dollars, uh, to cover this year's expenses. The North Carver Water District, um, what we have done with that is incorporated, um, the total cost of the enterprise fund into that number, so it includes also some of the indirect cost associated with the enterprise fund to better create that as a cost unit, and it is a cost unit. It's not a revenue unit for the town right now. Um, and, and that's why that's at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from when it was a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I've included proposing putting a hundred thousand dollars of the, the free cash, the profit from last year, into our stabilization account. Um, that account is below a million dollars right now. It should be about one point six, one point seven million dollars. Um, we are going to be going out borrowing tens of millions of dollars. And the key piece is we need to improve our bond rating and keep our bond rating high. Higher bond rating means lower borrowing costs. Lower borrowing cost means more money saved by the town. This is a key piece to add some money in there, so when we meet with the rating agencies, we can demonstrate that we, even in tough times, and these are real tough times, that we recognize our need to save. The second, the next item, the twenty-five thousand dollars for the, uh, OPEB, the other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPED, um, uh, that is proposing to put twenty-five thousand dollars in there now. Twenty-five thousand dollars, forty-seven million dollar liability. It's not gonna solve the problem. It, but it goes back into the message that part of what the bond rating agencies look for is financial discipline, following your financial processes. And even though this is a small number in the realm of things, it shows that we recognize that we need to start to put some money in there. And town meeting, I will be proposing, uh, with your support, setting up an OPED trust fund. setting up an OPED trust fund that can be used for this again.
There's one already in place. I don't know if you can find it.
Well, I think what we have right now is a stabilization fund for it, but I want to change it into the trust fund because the interest that we're, I'm sorry, the percent of the benefit actually impacts our OPED, um, um, actuarians. And we got an OPED committee that's working on that, so we'll let them do that later. And, and then finally, uh, that leaves about fifty-five thousand dollars in, in free cash. One of the things that I have proposed to the school is that the town is going to have to do some reorganization. No one likes it. The facts are, we just have to deal with the financial numbers that we have today, and that's going to require reorganization. That's going to require some layoffs. The school has to do some layoffs, too. Any layoffs requires that, that the town funds unemployment. What I don't want to do is to have the school have to lay off extra teachers to cover their unemployment cost. I also don't want to do that on the town side, is that if we follow our financial management policies and follow some good financial discipline, I believe the town will not be in this situation in twenty sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen, or forward from there. But this is a restructuring year. In the private sector, you would call this a restructuring cost. So I'm looking at for the unemployment, instead of embedding that into the operational budgets, is to use one-time funds to fund the unemployment cost. And again, that reduces the amount of layoffs or cuts that we'll have to do to employees. And again, that cut to the employee is kind of a temporary thing because you only need it for one year, assuming they're only in unemployment for thirty months, which is, and there's no extensions. Again, it's, 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 I'm proposing treating this as a restructuring cost. That's why I'm looking at fifty-five thousand dollars out of the, the free cash to pay for that. So that's, that's the proposal at this point that we're looking at for the free cash. And again, there are some numbers that are still changing, but I think that's relatively where we're going to be. The next piece is the revenue, the new revenue for, for FY fifteen. I've, I've stated this at least at three or four meetings, that hasn't changed. It's six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, based upon the governor's budget. If the budget changes or the legislature does something, that could go up a little bit. But if it goes up, maybe fifty thousand dollars, it's not going up, three hundred thousand dollars. And, and, you know, so there's not a lot of potential upside on that piece. Now, what I'm proposing using the new revenue for is to also use some of that to fund the unemployment restructuring cost at fifty-five thousand dollars. We also have some additional state costs that are being dictated to as for, for veterans. We have more veterans in town from last year. It is an obligation that we have to do, so that's twenty thousand dollars. The old Colony Votech, their fee and our allocation for this year is eighty-three thousand dollars. It is what it is. On top of that is that one of your directives is to help to solve or to have this, this, this battle on, on heroin and other drugs. And here's where I'm looking to fund the resource officer, which in essence is a community-wide position. Yes, it's a police officer, but the police officer during the academic year is embedded into the schools. This is an appropriate place to fund a townwide position out of new town money. So I have eighty-eight thousand dollars in there. And then the remaining, um, three seventy-four is a combination of healthcare and, and retirement. Those are fixed expenses that, um, again, are dictated to us. Retirement's going up faster than it should, uh, well, I shouldn't say faster than it should. Our new actuarian tables require Plymouth County to put more money into that. And our healthcare is going up, um, um, for active employees about five percent. I think I mentioned at our last meeting that we do have, uh, did receive the preliminary results of our healthcare audit. Actually, I'm going to talk about that second. Um, so before I get into that, this is what, how I'm proposing to go forward and allocate, um, the new revenue for twenty fifteen. And I did have a discussion, again, the, Meg and I, the, uh, the, the town accountant and I, and had a two and a half hour meeting with the superintendent and the business manager on Monday, going over all of these numbers.
Can I ask you a question, Michael? The twenty thousand, is that eligible for the seventy-five percent reimbursement? Veterans allocation?
No, this is, this is our different, our new allocation. It'd actually be, uh, would that be twenty-five thousand dollars? Uh, so we're still going to have to pay more on top of that.
Okay.
Uh, but, uh, actually, let me rephrase that, Jack. Yes, some of it is, but the net is twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Twenty thousand in new money, based upon the need and the new veterans that our veteran agents dealing with. So that's a net number.
And, and the, uh, resource officer, does that include his health benefits and all the other benefits?
Uh, that does. That includes, um, uh, eighteen thousand dollars for a family health plan, and it also includes, um, seventy thousand dollars for salary and, and some of the other overtime and, and, and associated costs for an officer.
Yep.
Even though his base is going to be less than that.
And, and outfit them as well?
Correct, correct.
Or her, whatever it might be.
The other piece that I just want to spend a, a moment or two talking about is, um... The capital building stabilization fund. And, uh, one of the things that I'm proposing to do is to expand the scope of the capital building fund, so that it's a capital building fund and capital outlay fund. Now, in some of the analysis that we've done... Prelimarily, looking at how much money is allocated into this fund, it would have two purposes. The first is to take in all the revenue for our debt service and our new personal property growth and the two and a half percent on top of that. And then out of that fund, have two elements, three elements that it funds. The first is debt service. The second is some reserve for next year into the fund, anticipating future debt service. And then whatever's left over, reasonably left over, is to use those funds to fund capital outlay items. What I don't want the town to be in a position to do is to only afford buildings and not be able to afford the other equipment to run the town. We need to fund both. You've established your financial management policies that has a goal of getting to ten percent. That's, means we need to have about three million dollars in this account. Uh, what it's showing in this first year, if I can run through the numbers in twenty fifteen, is four hundred thousand dollars from the prior year transfer, ten thousand dollars for the two and a half percent on top of that number, then new growth for personal property because of some, again, one-time items from A Star doing more work on the line, that's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The average of that should be around fifty-five if you look at, at trends here in, in town. Then what debt service rolls over from last year to eleven thousand dollars, plus what your, uh, what your new long-term debt services, house notes and capital leases, which is eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. That adds up to one point six million dollars. Now, when you chart, what you see, if you go to diagonal right, that one point six nine, all of a sudden gets put into twenty sixteen because that's the new base.
Yep.
And then on top of that, that adds two and a half percent, which is the forty-one thousand. And then whatever the personal property growth is that year, that gets added to that as well. So now in year two, you're one seven five, and as you can see, how that continues to grow. Some years you may get less in personal property, some years you may get more. The more money we get, the faster this fund grows. We really do need to be in a three million-plus-dollar range. And this has only carried out to twenty twenty-two. On the expense side, what you're seeing is the town hall and the library debt is rolling off in three years. We've got our house notes, which is, this is the last year of our house notes. So those long-term debts are going to be gone relatively quickly. Now, we're going to be adding new debt service for the fire station. We may add a portion of the debt service for the new elementary school into this number. Can't add a lot because there's not a lot of money, but maybe there's a small percent that can be funded within the base. The majority of the new project, if not, well, let's just say the majority, is going to have to be funded by a debt exclusion or other alternative funding sources, which, another small portion could be the CPA funds for some of the recreation activities. But again, that project's coming. You see that our capital leases go out for another six years before those expire. You also read and saw in our audit report that we're paying a couple points more for doing leases than we would if we went out and borrowed, based upon our bond rating. That's something we need to look at from a financial standpoint. The, the second to bottom line is what you would have is the balance each year, once you take off those fixed expenses. So this year, you're showing seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. Now, that can be used for new debt service or necessary equipment that has to be purchased this year or pushing some of the expenses off. I will say, we're going to have to come back and get a little bit more money for the school building project this year, and also for the fire station, just to continue the design process until we have a fall town meeting. Uh, some of that can come out of the residual from last year, but we are going to have to be coming back for, for some of those monies. Now, granted, this is a point in time. Once we start to borrow more money, these numbers all change, but you've got the basic formula here as to how this applies. We are going to have to make some structural changes to, to the, how the votes were done and go through some logistics as to how that happens. But, you know, this is what I've been proposing since we adopted our financial management policy, so that the capital fund is a priority of the town because we have to maintain our infrastructure. Out of that fund, it pays debt service for the buildings, and then the residual is to push the money off to the next year or to pay for capital outlay items. And therefore, we're able to satisfy both capital needs in the town. So that's, that's kind of how these numbers are starting to shake up. Uh, these numbers may change a little bit, but the formula as I'm proposing it and the methodology won't. Any questions on that?
Very good, good.
And, and just, just one final note on that is, is I will be having more meetings with the finance committee, um, and the capital outlet committee, and also the town building committee on, on finalizing this, this process. I want to take just a little bit of, uh, Mr. Ward's thunder away when he does his presentation under selectmen's comments um, for the governance committee, is the governance committee has been meeting, um, and is, uh, exploring some of the reorganization proposals or concepts in theory that I presented to them. Now, the governance committee's job, if you will, is that I, as the hired professional, can come in and rec, make recommendations, but it's not my decision. It's your decision, it's the town meeting's decision, it's the people of Carver's decision. So I'm able to present some concepts to them of things that I think need to be looked at, and some recommendations to how to go about doing it. It's their job to review, dissect, rebuild, change, modify those proposals and come out with their own recommendation that, that is most likely going to be something different. And then for them to take that to the next step and to present that to the selectman in town meeting and justify why, going back to a question that was raised earlier, is why are we looking at doing some of these, these plans? Well, we know why because of the finances. Here's what the pros and cons of that are, so that it's now not one person doing it, it's a team of five diverse people that I think are on the committee that all have different opinions, but are able to work together to form a consensus and, um, and move forward. So, I don't know, Mr. Ward, if you want to just comment on that a little bit, but...
Uh, yes, it's a very diverse committee, um, with, uh, opinions fairly quickly. But we're meeting with, uh, a variety of people in different positions with, with no predisposed thoughts, trying to say, okay, where do you come from on this situation? And we've met with the police chief and the fire chief today. We're meeting with other departments, and we're not saying that we're going to do anything. We're trying to find out ideas and see where things will fit that will work maybe better than they're working now in town or as good. Um, so, yeah, we are, we're in a fact-finding situation, and we're meeting once next week and then twice the following week. And we're meeting at seven thirty in the morning. And, um, so we're working, we're working at it. And the five people are the, uh, uh, we have two past selectmen on there, Jim Grimes and Jack Angley. They have myself on there as present selectman, chairman of the finance committee, and Steve Gray, who's the chairman of the zoning board of appeals committee. So, uh, you have a diversified group. Um, so, uh, we haven't had, we haven't taken any votes yet, so we're not hitting each other yet.
We did have one consensus this morning, and the one consensus is that the fire station and everything there is running very well and there's no need to look at that anymore, let's look at something else.
That's a, that's fine.
Um, I, I do want to just, uh, add a couple components to that. And that is, this analysis is an objective analysis. It's looking at the position by the work requirement to do the position and the department's workload. It's not looking at personalities, it's not looking at people, it's not looking at are they a good worker or a bad worker. It's looking at what is the need for this town function that has to supply certain services? To what extent are those services, the services are needed? How much effort does it take to do those services? And, and that'll go into the analysis. The other piece that I a- also want to do is, no, no final plans have been created at this point. There's some general concepts. Those general concepts are nothing more than concepts with some approaches. And for anyone to start to make assumptions out of that is wrong because no decision or, or even formal framework has been created. It's doing the data gathering mission, it's exploring the workload, it's then developing a solution based upon that information. So I know some people have already come up with their decisions of what it's going to be. They're ahead of me, and I haven't even presen, presented them yet, so I caution people not to jump too quickly into government and its working process because it takes several steps. And until you get to that eighth, ninth, or tenth step, don't pass judgment, please, until we get there. Is that fair, Mr. Ward?
Good, fine, um, yep.
So, Mr. Chairman?
So he take your thunder away?
Uh, no, 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 uh, I, uh, had to leave the last meeting just a little early. But this morning, uh, we were there, um, pretty much for two hours and, um, listening. And, uh, so I think that there isn't an awful lot to say, other than the fact that we're, that we s, we're researching, listening, and trying to figure out, uh, some ideas. And then when we start discussing what we want to vote, uh, what we don't want to vote, uh, how we want to leave things, or how we want to add to things, that's going to be later.
Um, with that, I can tell you right now that I'm still going to take more than another week to finalize the budget. So short of other activities that need to happen at the board of selectmen's meeting next week, because we rescheduled this week, it's up to you whether you want to table next week and just go to the following, to the, to the regularly scheduled meeting. Um, but from a budgetary standpoint, it's still going to take more than a week to wrap up what I need to do on my end. I just end my comments on that.
Yep.
Very good.
I'd still like to have the meeting next week because we might have to have another executive session there, so... And you know what I'm referring to, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to stay on schedule if we could.
I, I think we should, too. All right, well, all set. Next up is the board of selectmen comment period. And, uh, first, we have a vote to approve the Route fifty-eight town of Carver owned easements. And I know I signed off on a document a little bit earlier. So I, I think that's all settled, if not, uh, I'm sure you'll let me know.
And this is just because you're the owner of record?
Right, right.
For everything alo- for many of the properties along here, i.e. right in front of here? We still need to have a, um, a donation from the town to the project, while the project's going on, and then we get our donation back.
You know how much it is? How much is the donation?
A lot.
No, I think there's about twelve that are town-owned parcels.
Uh, there's actually, yeah, there's more than ten, uh, twelve to fifteen, yeah.
Have we run into any issues with any of the homeowners or anything?
Uh, we're still working with many of the homeowners, we received some of them in, we sent out a second notice last week. Um, I received a call today from one of the homeowners, um, the VHB has been going out and meeting with some of the neighbors, making some plant, some changes to the plans, uh, where there's some, some survey issues. Um, now, I, I will tell you, at the end of the day, yes, we will have problems, you always do, but we're continuing to still work through this in a, in a positive way. So, I guess, Mr. Chairman, just, we can just have your vote, your signature ratified, just so that, just for the record for Mass Highway?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, unanimous, Elaine.
I would also need a ratification on the next item. Uh, this was the Estoppel, Estoppel certificate for the solar power purchase agreement down in Dartmouth. Um, this is a document that was time-sensitive, that the lawyers needed signed it. I probably have the authority of doing it, because the lawyers told me to do it, but, um, it was an agreement you put together, and it's just recertifying this for the lending institutions, it doesn't change anything, it just was this agreement that needed to be done.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments, concerns?
Elaine, did you get that okay?
Questions?
You can always get the wording from the
Check.
No questions.
Uh, yeah, could you, Michael, would you explain to the public what an Estoppel certificate is, please?
Um, it's a document that the, uh, the, the lending institution needs from, um, uh, from the, the, uh, developer to justify, to prove that they had received all the appropriate permits, all the uh, agreements from the town, and it kind of summarizes that, and when you change lenders, you need to go back and recertify those information.
So this is the very same agreement that we voted on previously?
Correct, no change to the agreement has occurred.
Thank you.
I think Jim signed off on that last time, didn't he?
Yeah, you know, and it's, it's, our bylaws are a little clear as to who can sign off on these, so. I had to do it in an emergency, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention to know that I did it.
To ratify it, yeah.
Just covers all bases.
That's right.
We have a motion and a second, any further comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, unanimous, Elaine.
Um, go. The next item, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to table that, um, uh, because I am going to be, um, meeting, um, based upon some direction I received from the Selectmen, um, to work out, uh, some agreements with, um, one of the inspectors.
I make a motion, we table it?
Excuse me?
I said I made a motion, we table it.
Second.
Trying to help you keep it within your time limit.
All right, so you want to table this? Um, do we have a motion to table?
Yes.
I did.
And we have a second?
Yeah.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Genanamous, Elaine, thanks.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration is, um, going back to my four things as to how we solve the budget, one of them is raise revenue. Um, and that includes, uh, the, uh, I, I, I'm a, I'm a strong believer that the taxpayers pay for basic level of service in town. There are some entities, groups, businesses, whatever it may be, that sometimes need extra services, more services. Well, those services or those extra uses, uh, are eligible for an extra user fee or a permit fee. So that those that are using the services should pay for the services that they're getting. All of the departments have been going forward and looking at their user fees to make sure that they're in line with the market, and also what the work effort is in those, uh, user fees. Some of the committees, uh, Planning Board, Conservation Board of Health, uh, are already moving forward with making some recommendations, they have to hold public hearings for that process, uh, but they've gone back and scrubbed, if you will, their, um, their fee permit schedules. Uh, with that, um, I did have the opportunity of meeting with the Chairman and Mr. Ward to look, and also the Building and Commissioner, to look at, uh, some of the fees that currently exist in town, and where those fees may need to be, uh, modified, to be in line with today's market. So again, what you have down here is a vote to approve permit user fee modifications, and, uh, you have a list on one side of fees that are proposed to be instituted effective tomorrow. Um, also, in working, uh, with the need for the community to look at all sources of revenue, is although reluctantly, uh, the Fire, uh, Chief has gone through and identified uh, rates that, that are being charged by his comparable departments, uh, around town. And, um, what I would be looking to do, particularly with these, is to look at putting these into, uh, the revolving account that we currently have with the Fire Department. Uh, this is probably going to amount to about five thousand dollars on this side. They currently don't have a structure to collect fees, so I'm proposing the Fire Department fees don't go into effect until July one. When we get the new software, we talked about with Software, that's going to have the Fire Department module to enter in their fees.
Does that revolving account need to be established at a Town Meeting?
It does, it does, I'm just forewarning, giving a heads up that that's what my intent would be.
Are you talking about just the Fire Department fees, or the ones on the back?
Just the Fire Department fees and the revolving fund.
Not the ones on the back?
The ones in the back would all be going to the general fund.
No, but you were talking about establishing those fe- fees on the back right now, too?
Yes.
I noted that there isn't, uh, a non-resident fee here, for the transfer on beach stickers.
Why don't I let Mr. Ward and the Chairman talk about those fees?
We did discuss those, um.
I thought we charged the higher rate for, uh,
It is, it is, it's sixty dollars.
Out of town, yeah.
It's not on here.
Well, these are only fees we're looking to modify. The existing fees we're not going to touch, if it's not on this list, we're not proposing any changes. This is cheap fees that we want to modify, because they appear to, to, to need some modification.
And what's the non-resident right now, sixty?
Right. The problem with raising that is that, uh, the only mechanism we have to combat that, uh, should people decide not to apply for it, is to attempt to write them citations, um, if we encounter them. Uh, the citations are fifteen dollars. So, it might be advantageous for people to just go use Sampson's Pond and take the fine.
Okay.
So.
Can't we raise the citations?
Uh, we probably could, but I think that's a another process altogether, and it has to deal with Plymouth County and a, and a number of other issues, yeah, so.
Do we know how many non-resident stickers we give out each year, by any chance?
Elaine, you didn't have the number on that, or?
Is it even worthwhile discussing? Yeah, okay.
Probably not that many.
So it wasn't a significant number?
Yeah. Yeah.
Twenty-five.
So that's why jackets not on hand, because that's not scheduled for an increase.
I have to wait till my next birthday to get the break.
I'm sorry, what's roughly the percentage increase on these fees?
Well, it depends, um, and, and some of them were, I, I wouldn't look at it as a percentage, because some of them were just so out of whack.
Okay, so out of date?
Yeah, you really can't look at it, I, I would suggest you can't look at it that way. I mean, in essence, for the public that doesn't have this list, is, uh, for the commercial fee, being comparable with our surrounding towns for construction costs, is ten dollars per thousand dollars of construction cost. For alterations and interior renovations, it's one percent of the construction cost. If there has to be a re-inspection, and a re-inspection occurs if a contractor did not meet code when the inspector went out there, and it forces the inspector to come out for another time, in essence, there's a penalty for not doing the, the work right the first time. Is that we shouldn't come out four times, and if you get it right, it's, we will, but there's a, there's a charge for that. As it relates to the beach and the transfer station user fees, uh, this is a two-year permit, and, uh, what the recommendation is, is for those that are sixty-five and older, is that the rate stays at ten dollars or five dollars per year. Uh, and again, it's a two-year piece, so it's ten dollars for those two years. So no change in those sixty-five and older. Uh, for everyone else, it would be twenty dollars for the two years, or ten dollars per year. Then to put in the all-town-owned property permit, which includes where we have these tournaments that come in, uh, this would be fifty dollars, is that, is there any other properties that that would uncover?
Sherwood Park.
Sherwood Park, right.
The pond.
Yeah, the pond, Sampson's Pond.
So it's straight fifty dollars per tournament or event?
And there's costs attached to all of those, I mean, DPW picking up the trash, porta-potties that are used, bathrooms that are used, that have to be cleaned and stuff, so.
What's the price right now?
Price right now is, uh, I don't believe it's anything, they just have to have a, uh, insurance certificate to cover. So, this will defray some of our expenses involved in maintaining these things, and providing these services to people. And, you know, we looked at a lot of the surrounding towns, Mike had a wealth of data for Dick and I to look at, and I think, uh, you know, we're right in the ballpark, if not below, a lot of other communities still with these changes, so.
Now, again, you as a board, if there's a nonprofit that's coming to do a fundraiser event or something like that, you have the right to waive the fee. But again, this is to try to establish a standard going forward.
We should establish a standard on what we will waive.
Many, many of the things at, uh, Sherwood Park, like the Old Home Day and things, that's all non, nonprofit.
But we should just establish some sort of policy on what we will waive, because then it can become very biased in terms of one, one.
It could, yep.
Things that are like, things that are like town-wide, open to town-wide, that, that would be ideal to waive something like that, where it's for specific interests, um, yeah, I don't think you justify that, so. Just my opinion.
Well, we can record in the minutes that any town-wide event is, is waived. We're going to come back to you for that one.
That would include the Cub Scouts, uh, and different organizations like that.
And nonprofit events?
I think we
I would charge the Girl Scouts fifty bucks for
Yeah, I don't think we should jump on that, I think you should, we should sit down and talk about what should be waived, and what shouldn't.
Yeah, it just got real complicated. Town-wide event, we were all right, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it should be most nonprofits, uh, but again, sometimes a nonprofit is a for-profit group.
Right.
We all know what I mean by that, but generally, I think the concept there is nonprofit, but we could easily have a quick little subcommittee put together a policy for that, you could correct it, that's how we go forward. And we don't have to bring those to your attention, it just becomes an administrative issue, which saves everybody time, but you need to establish that.
Right.
If I can flip the page, um, um, this is, uh, the proposed, uh, fire permits. Uh, generally, what you have is there be, um, a twenty-five dollar residential fee, and then a, a hundred dollar fee for commercial, there are some nuances in here. The one thing that I do want to make a, a note of is open-air burning permits. There is no fee for those, we need people to call and let us know, and the people do a good job of that right now, but uh, the concept there is beyond the DEP's issues and something catching on fire, is if there's smoke coming out of an area, the Fire Department wants to know about that ahead of time versus doing a call and having, you know, all seventy-five firefighters running to leaves that are burning, because someone forgot to pull a permit, that's not helpful to anybody, that's why there's no fee on that. And again, I just want to emphasize that from a public safety standpoint. We need you to call in and get an open air permit, it's free, just do it, please.
Well, maybe what we should do to encourage that is have some kind of a, uh, town bylaw and a fine associated with that, if they don't comply with the instructions, I mean.
I, I would say that's an item to look at in the future, but.
Just like alarms, false alarms, those are very expensive, they're very dangerous, because you set a lot of things in motion, you get people running around with, uh, emergency lights on and sirens, and, and, and oftentimes for, uh, no specific reason other than that the alarm is malfunctioning, so.
So we don't charge for those right now, Mike? Probably the first one is free?
We, we encounter that in the police department frequently. Um, you have multiple firms that are out there running these different, uh, alarm systems, and, uh, we get numerous calls, those same addresses all the time, so. There is, there is a problem with it. Fire, Fire may not encounter it, but I know that the police does, so. You looking for a vote, uh, sir?
You guys need to vote this, up or down, or?
I'll make a motion, we approve these rates, is proposed by the Town Administrator or the, the Governance Committee, the Governance Committee?
No, it was, uh, this wasn't the Governance Committee, this was just a
Make a motion, we approve.
I'll second it.
This was two, the two prominent Citizens Committee, Dick and I.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, Elaine. Governance Committee update.
Well, we kind of gave that already, so you're all set on that.
Vote to approve the election warrant?
Did we approve that once, uh?
Lynn? The election warrant?
It's been a long day, Len, we know.
It has, I'm sorry, and I was, I was staying just for that reason.
Well, Dick was up at seven thirty this morning at a governance meeting.
Oh, poor baby. Come on.
I was up well before that.
The election warrant is what we need to have approved for the election that's coming up on April twenty-sixth, needs to be posted seven days prior.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll say, I thought we already signed it, I second it. Was it in there for us to sign?
It's, it's in there for us to sign after we approve it, so.
Yes, you're ratifying your signature.
Pretty much.
So we have a motion?
Yes.
I made a mo- she made the motion, I second it.
And a second. Any ca- questions, comments, concerns? Recommendations? Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous.
Great.
Warrant's been approved.
She wants us to sign it now, so she doesn't have to come back tomorrow.
Well, I, I know your signatures well now, but I don't think I have to witness them in this, so, we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, Board of Selectmen comments, uh, somebody like to kick it off, any volunteers?
I'm, I'm going to pass.
I just would like to thank that anonymous donor who had the financial capability, but I also want to thank the entire parental group and other citizens in Carver that have been attending the mobilizing community groups, because, you know, some people can afford mo- money, some people can afford time, other people can, you know, give their, their talents to this cause. So I just want to thank everybody in this entire community that is pitching in in any way that they possibly can.
Check.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I got a call from a irate voter today, and she said that she had put her name in to be on a committee back in July, and she just received notification that she's been appointed as an alternate, that someone else has been appointed ahead of us, so I told her I'd bring it up at the meeting tonight, and mention it not to embarrass the Town Administrator, mention it to him, and have her come and see him, and see if they can resolve it, but she happens to live in, um, public housing out back, and, you know, she was pretty irritated, she goes to the Council on Agent every day and participates down there, and she really wanted to contribute after hearing at the Selectmen's meetings all the time that they have all these openings, and she's had her name in for months, and so she just figured, you know, what's the point of us announcing all these mo- uh, openings if someone's going to reply and then not get appointed, so. I think we might be able to resolve it with a meeting with the Town Administrator.
Uh, no embarrassment needed. Um, I have two candidates for the position. Uh, we have one position open now. We have another one that's opening, we anticipate opening up in the near future. I did appoint both people, uh, one to fill the full voting position. And, uh, the woman that you're mentioning, uh, without mentioning her name, uh, appointed her as the alternate member, as a non-voting member. And as soon as someone leaves the committee, she'll be the next appointee.
Yeah.
And I found, Dylan, sometimes being a non-voting member, you sometimes have more influence and your position is heard, uh, on committees than being a voting member.
Well, she was just disappointed because she felt that, and I don't know how long the other lady had her name in, but she felt that she had been waiting for quite a few months, and you weren't around for the first six months of it. So, uh, you're new to the game here and, uh, so I hope you don't take any offense to it.
No, and I, and I did make an effort to, uh, I think we announced in the beginning of March that I was going to be making all the appointments that had been sitting in the folders uh, in March, and I did do that, and, um, you know, some people, um, I can't please everybody.
No, and we, you know, we had a transitional town administrator in here that did a pretty remarkable job and so I'm not going to say anything more on that, but I do like to listen to the constituents and what they have to say, so.
I, I wouldn't mind sitting down with you again, now that the decision's been made, to see how you figured out how to pick one because I know that that one person had asked a long time ago. Do you know at the top of your head if this person that was appointed as a voter came in before her or was it credentials?
I know that both applications came back in the fall or summer of last year, uh, well before I got here. And I think as I've demonstrated in all the appointments of committees, what I am trying to do is giving some of the issues that are in town is trying to make, to the best of my ability, and I may be wrong sometimes, is trying to make sure we have a balanced committees. So they're all not on one side or on the other side, that they tend to be balanced. And again, in the near future, this person will become a full voting member, real quickly, I think.
Well, I, I think there's probably a lot of people in town that aren't with either group that you're talking about, so we just have to be careful of that we don't step on people's toes, and I'm not saying that's what you did, so.
Anything else, Jack?
That's it.
Sarah?
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. The, uh, the only thing I would like to do is, um, ask everybody to keep, along with, uh, fallen first responders, the two firefighters in Boston and the police officer in Plymouth, uh, keep them and their families in your prayers. And along with that, all of our military serving around the world and defending our freedom. And, uh, again, just please keep them in your prayers. Thank you. Okay. Minutes, licenses, topics, not recently anticipated. Minutes of three, six, fourteen and three, eleven, fourteen. I think we're gonna have to split them because, uh, I was not at one of these meetings, so.
I'll make a motion to approve March sixth meeting minutes.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? Concerns, recommendations, changes? Hearing none, seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I'm abstaining, Elaine, so four, zero, one. Okay. We have a motion on the eleventh.
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a second. Any comments, questions, concerns? Recommendations for changes? Hearing none, seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Genanamously. Okay, request for use of Sampson's Pond, Eastside Sport Fishing Club, Sunday, May fourth, eighteen vehicles, five AM to eleven AM, and South Coast Bass Anglers, Sunday, August seventeen, seven AM to three PM, fifteen vehicles.
Make a motion, we approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second.
If we approve this tomorrow, they could charge them fifty bucks.
No, we, we, if they submitted it before this vote, they get the old, if they submit it tomorrow, then yes.
We, we discussed this. If they already had something in the pipeline, we're not going to do that.
We're gonna be like the people on Beacon Hill. We gotta table it and commit it.
That would be a cheap shot.
Like the unfunded mandates the state passes to us, right? So, which by the way, uh, just as a matter of info, I read recently in the newspaper that the, uh, the governor has mandated that all first responders will be trained in the use of an R can. So you can anticipate that coming down. And I'm sure that the, the chiefs of the EMS, fire, police will have to prepare for this in the training, so.
Is he gonna fund the Quinn bill now?
They're gonna fund the what?
Pay us back for the Quinn bill.
Okay. Moving along.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have one more bass that has squeaked in before the deadline of the new rates.
Oh, yeah.
And it's for Carver Bass, uh, for requested date of July twenty-six, twenty-fourteen. And they're looking to have thirteen people, thirteen vehicles and thirteen boats.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments?
What was the date? July?
July twenty-sixth.
Is it okay to vote on it if it's not on the agenda?
There is a provision, yeah. There is a provision for that, so. All right. Any, um, any comments, questions? Hearing none, seen none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Genanamously. All right, public comment period. Yes, ma'am. Please come up and identify yourself and tell us what, uh, what the issue is.
Hi, my name is Nancy Ryan. I live at one eighty Tremont Street. Um, I'm just gonna go off topic for what I was gonna talk about just for a second. The person that Jack Franny is talking about, I'm also on the Board of Selectmen. And, um, she has been very active. Her and I have updated the bylaws. We spent months doing it. It was her idea to have a, adopt a nursing home, um, last Christmas, which was very successful. So she is at every single meeting, um, that I just wanted to mention. The other thing I want to talk about is I did write a letter to the Carver Reporter, um, thanking Indicatorelli for, um, posting on his website, um, giving, if I asked, I approached him and I asked him if he would put something on his webpage about do- submitting donations, asking people for donations when he did his, um, fundraiser to kick off his campaign. Uh, it was very, very, um, it was very nice. Um, he brought in quite a bit of food, really appreciated it. Um, since two thousand and ten, I have done the, the work-off program, the senior work-off program. I'm lucky enough that I work. I volunteer at the food pantry. I am extremely active in the food pantry. Um, I'm always out there trying to get people, and you know, um, you're very, thank you, and we appreciate any help. Um, I have no access to a computer. I got a call the next day that there was a nasty comment in the paper from Mr. Dewhurst. And in essence, um, he wasn't sure if it was political or.
All right, Nancy, I think, uh, we're not gonna make this personal.
All right.
No, no attacks.
I, I just, I just want to comment.
Take the high road. You've been doing very well.
Well, I just want to comment.
We're all proud of you, okay?
Yeah. If I could just, I just want to put that out there.
Okay.
I am strictly interested in the food pantry.
And by the way, you do have access to a computer whether you know it or not.
I know, I know.
The library.
I know, I know. I have one at home. I just, I just haven't set it up. So I just wanted to.
They can be a lot of fun.
I, hey.
Yeah, and you guys are doing an excellent job, and I think as you heard Mr. Milonowski say, there was, uh, he inherited the issue with the appointments and everything else. He knows none of the players and stuff.
I understand.
Um, the intent is that that individual will fleet up to the opening that's anticipated coming up here real soon. So I would just ask you to tell her to, to be a little patient. And, uh, we certainly, certainly appreciate all the work she's done, um, in the background and stuff.
Yeah.
And, and we want to keep her involved, okay? And you too. We need that. The town can't survive without people stepping up to the plate, so.
Yep, okay. I just.
And thank you for coming tonight and sharing that with us. All right, there. Uh, one other note on the, uh, on the council on aging. I have a little flyer here, hear ye, hear ye, hear ye. Friends of the Carver Council on Aging, invite all residents of the Carver, of Carver to an open house at the Atwood House, Lakeview and Tremont Streets, Saturday, April twelfth, two thousand and fourteen, from ten AM to one PM. Come see all the things Carver does for their seniors. Door prizes, refreshments, join the friends to help support the COA. And, uh, on the twelfth, on that same vein, don't we have a, uh, fire department, uh,
Graduation.
Graduation that day, chief?
In the coyote walkers.
In the coyote walkers, the same.
Yeah, an hour beforehand.
There's a hat trick.
All right. So we have a full plate on the twelfth. What time is the graduation, chief?
Uh, so we move to one thirty.
To one thirty? Are you inviting the general public to come down and, uh?
They're always welcome, and we will have actually the state fire marshals actually attend.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
How many, how many graduates?
Seven firefighters and three from the town.
Maybe we can get the names and everything and announce those at the next meeting and stuff and, uh, are we gonna do a swearing and ceremony at the board or are you gonna do it over at the fire department or?
They will graduate that day to give an admittance to the school.
Okay, all right. So a lot of activities on April twelfth, folks. Please put those all on your calendar. Uh, new recruits for the fire department graduation, council on aging as an event, and the, what's the other? The Coyotes.
That's the elementary school.
With the elementary school.
PTO hall of conversation.
Okay. Anybody else have any other announcements? Yes, sir. Mr. Dunham. You didn't have your hand up, Rich.
He's a regular. He's here every week.
Okay, I'll be quick. Allen Dunham, eleven Ricard Street. Not only do we have activities on the twelfth, however, this, uh, Friday and Saturday at the Carver Middle High School, the middle high school drama club will be putting on the musical Little Shop of Horrors at seven PM. I don't ask me how much. I forgot to ask my daughter. But, uh, that's really good entertainment. Uh, support the, uh, middle high school drama club, uh, and it'll teach you to not, you know, just not plant any kind of plant. You want to know what you're planting, so. Little Shop of Horrors, Friday and Saturday, seven PM.
Friday and Saturday?
Seven PM.
This Friday and Saturday?
Uh-huh.
Okay, all right.
So not interfering with the twelfth.
Nope. All right. Thank you, sir. All right, Rich.
See, I thought I was a regular.
Come on, your time's running. The clock's running. You got three minutes.
Should've been sitting up here.
I'll be quick. April Fool.
Identify yourself.
Rich Kaiser, Meadowbrook Apartments.
I had a meeting Friday with a, uh, state politician. I'm not going to say it was a real meeting because it was more or less a bum brush. That's as far as I'm gonna go there. When I made comments and brought up the situation at Meadowbrook, this person informed me that this has been going on for over twelve years. This politician's fully aware of what's going on and identified what's happening now is the latest flare-up. There are people over there that are just so afraid of saying anything. And I'm gonna use the word mutual friend, and I think you all know who we're talking about. Who's no longer in that apartment complex. And I'm wondering how much that person's health may have been affected by the apartment that he was in and hadn't seen repairs in twenty years. I have a suggestion, a proposal. I think we can solve or at least identify some of the problems. But it's going to involve the Board of Selectmen, the town, the town administrator and town council. I have a friend that knows, and I'm willing to sit down with any member of this board and Dick, because he's familiar with a lot of it, and this friend with town council, and we have an idea. It may work. But one of the other ideas is for the town to have an independent inspection of four or five of those apartments.
Didn't they bring a state inspector down?
Yeah, but it was about an hour and a half, walked on the property and did whatever he wanted to do and left.
Would, did anybody go with him and point out some of these concerns?
He came by me when I was in the, in the hall downstairs and, and said that it had to be specifically addressing safety problems. That's all he said to me. And he went with the building inspector and they went out.
Mike, this idea, I've done a lot of homework and you know I have.
All right, what I'm gonna suggest, Rich, is first of all, okay?
You want to put it in writing?
Put it in writing. Let's give it to the town administrator and we'll go over it and we'll take a look at it. And if, and if there appears to be something that we can do beyond bringing in a state building inspector and our own building inspector, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
I think this would be a wise move because it keeps it independent.
We'll take, we'll take a look.
You understand what I, what I mean by that?
Yeah.
That's just for starters. But twelve years, Mike?
Rich, put it all in writing, please. Collect the complaints, the concerns, put it all in writing, and let's get it to the town administrator so we have something of substance to deal with, okay?
I'll put it in writing.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, everything that happened up to prior to my speaking here, April Fools.
Thanks.
Not your joke. April Fools. Didn't happen.
He's calling us April Fools.
Hey, you bet on April first.
I'll answer to anything. I don't care.
All right, I'll get in right. I'll get in right.
Thank you.
But I just have a problem with twelve years.
Okay. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like to pick up the next item?
Executive session?
Yes.
I move we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to preparation for collective bargaining negotiations with unions and for preparation for non-union contract negotiations with non-union personnel that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held an open session and to reconvene in open session.
And I'm going to recuse myself.
Folks, thank you for being here tonight, okay?